Good afternoon and welcome to the town meeting preview for 2022. I'm joined here by Town Administrator Anthony Unsaldi. And as I think we started last year, we're not going to do the whole presentation. We figured out that it was better to hear from the department heads and people that are actually working on a lot of these articles. So certainly Anthony is as well. So we're going to kind of kick things off, give you the beginning of the preview and talk about a couple of the articles. And then you'll be hearing from other department heads and team members as we go forward. So I hope everyone's received by now in the mail their copy of the town meeting report that contains all the information on the various warrant articles, proposed motions, recommendations from the finance committee and other boards, also some good information on how this is going to affect your property taxes, presumably things get passed as we think they will. The town meeting again is Monday, May the 2nd at the Charlie K Gymnasium, Littleton Middle School, 7:00 PM. And we're once again, we're going to go with the, well, let me go over some of the ground rules here and just to point out the presentations, formal presentations are limited to 10 minutes. The limit on individual speakers, we had been going with four minutes a speaker. We're going to try three minutes per speaker for this town meeting. We found four minutes was a little long and people, I think, were taking a little advantage of the extra minute. So you get to speak once per article unless there's new information or another reason to speak, but we want to give people a chance to get their point across. And our time limit is that we won't take up any new business after 10:30 PM. We're hoping that doesn't even come into play. We were chatting earlier that we think that this town meeting could be on the shorter end of things, certainly not a whole lot of controversial items that we think are controversial, but we'll see. Town meeting will be the judge of that. Once again, as moderator, I'll call through the articles by number. And if voters wish to hold or debate any article, they should call out hold and then we'll set those articles aside. Everything that doesn't get held initially, we will take a brief unanimous vote on. And that way we can bundle together non-controversial routine articles that kind of come up every year, they're necessary business of the town, but they're not anything that usually takes up much time. And then we'll go back with the order for the non-held articles and vote, debate, you know, debate and vote in the usual manner. We've had, we've used this procedure in a couple of years now at least, calling through all of the articles and it's worked pretty well. We certainly don't want to rush anyone and if people feel that they want to discuss anything, we're happy to do that. So I don't want to imply that we're, you know, in a hurry to get out of there. We want to take our time and do the town's business properly. So I think we're going to start with Articles 1 and 2, which normally are part of that consent agenda because they're not controversial in any way and they're routinely approved on that basis as well as a number of other articles you see on the screen. But I'll just mention town officers, you'll see references to fence viewers and field drivers and weighers of grain and hay and so forth. And those are kind of vestiges of a bygone era when the town was, you know, an agrarian community. They're largely, I think, ceremonial honorific positions. I know one of our select board members is one of the fence viewers, Mr. Knox. We, you know, we vote this annually, it's not controversial. A lot of communities have done away with it. So it's, I guess, part of our tradition and there's never a debate on who's going to be a fence viewer or the like. So that is, Article 1 is, you know, pretty routine. Article 2 is required because every community must make an annual report to the town of the business of all the town departments. And so we're accepting the contents of the reports, not passing judgment, not passing, you know, yea or nay on the contents, but just accepting those town reports from the various departments. And Anthony, I did note that the town, once again, got an award from the MMA for the annual report. So congrats on that. Maybe you want to speak a little bit about that?
Sure. Thank you, Tim. Yes, this is actually three out of the last four years that our town has received first place in the MMA's annual report contest for our size of our category two that's called for the size of the community. You know, our staff really puts a lot of pride and effort into creating the annual report, one that we, you know, when we started this four years ago, we envisioned that this is something that could be sitting on somebody's coffee table. And it's full of some pictures and some graphs and a lot of information about what's going on around town. So our staff has done a tremendous job and I'm proud again, once again, to receive that award on behalf of the town.
Yeah, no, that's great. And you've introduced color to the town report. I remember the old days, it was black and white and it was a chore to get people to write their annual reports. So, you know, it's come a long way since then. So congratulations on that. All right, and Article 3, bills of prior years, it requires a four-fifths majority vote. Anthony, what's coming up for prior year bills, if any?
Sure, Tim. So next I'm going to bring in Alicia Dunlebenjamin, our finance director, who is going to go through all the financial articles, including Article 3. So she'll be able to really give the town a nice clear picture on what's going on.
Great, great. Thank you.
So Alicia, thank you. Let's talk about Article 3, which is bills of prior year. Can you go through what's going on?
Sure. So when we first put together the articles and the wars, we didn't have any prior year invoices. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, if you receive any invoices in the new year for services or goods from the prior year, they have to be voted by the annual town meeting to be paid. And so we did receive four invoices that came in for some advertising, for some job openings that were from last year. They total, an E25 in total. And the reason why we have these bills is during the transition of not having an HR department and creating a new HR department in fiscal year 22. So there will be a handout provided at annual town meeting for this.
Great, I'm glad you mentioned that. That's correct because when we set up the, we sent out the town meeting book, like Alicia said, we did not have any bills at that time. So there will be a handout that will be passed out by the town clerk and her staff at town meeting for Article 3. Thank you, Alicia. And let's talk about Article 4.
Thank you, Anthony. So Article 4 is the fiscal year 23 operating budget.
And if I could, I'm sorry, just to jump in, I just want to, you know, thank you both for putting in the endless amount of time and putting together our $64 million operating budget. For those that are watching, a lot goes into that and really Alicia and Sean, despite COVID and having some issues and restrictions that we all had to deal with, did a great job. So I just want to thank you and, you know, the town truly appreciates all the work that you do and I know the select board does and thank you. So now I'll let you do Article 4.
So in Article 4, our total operating budget you'll see is that $54,483,471, but we have 931,370, what it says, other available funds, which are actually transfers into the general fund. So our net total operating budget is $53,552,101. And I'll let Sean talk about some of the big items that they had.
Yeah, I think, you know, looking back from FY '21 to FY '22, some of the biggest changes were, you know, budgeting in sort of a post-pandemic with actual numbers that helped to really draw out, you know, where we actually thought we were going to be. So as part of that, we had to do, propose some of the positions to kind of catch up on some of those public health and safety positions that were important to the town but weren't able to be funded in years past. So some of those positions include funding a police officer, funding a public health department, and then some of the other departments getting sort of that overhead support so that the town can function. On top of the budget, we'll get into a little bit later is the capital and warrant article pieces for about $2.5 million there, which go to replacing some of the infrastructure vehicles and also providing funding to our stabilization accounts.
And to add on to what Sean has brought in is our town administrator, Anthony, thank you, asked us to do a long-term capital improvement plan. So instead of a five-year plan, we have a 10-year plan so that we are better planning for the future with our assets and have a much more accurate picture. So thank you, Anthony.
Right. No, thank you guys, really. So our staff put together this 10-year plan, but we only really show five for the sake of, for what the boards see, but in the background, there's 10 years. And we really wanted that planning thought process out there in order to think about those years coming ahead, not just what's in front of us in the next five years. So thank you, guys. You did a great job putting that together as well. So let's get into Article 5, the revolving funds. And we just heard, you talked a little bit about Alicia Day's revolving fund, but please talk, talk us through the remaining.
Yeah, so the remaining departmental revolving funds that we have on here has one amendment where they wanted to amend in Section 1814 of the bylaws for Elder and Human Service Revolving Fund to put there for the following fiscal year 2021 and subsequent years, just as a tiny little correction. And the rest of the revolving funds, as you will see, the alarm box repairs, CPR courses, just for a few, all need a spending limit set for the year. So we do an analysis to see how much is left, how much they're collecting, and we can all put that spending limit that the town votes for.
Great. Well, thank you guys so much for going through Article 4 and 5. And we're going to hear from Nick Lawler, who's going to talk about Article 6.
Great, thanks, Anthony. For the first time in a long time, the water department has a very light lift at town meeting and it feels, feels pretty good. The two articles that we're going to talk about right now are the funding articles for both the water department and the sewer department. Article 6 is the Water Enterprise Funding Article, standard article that we've had every year for a very, very long time. FY '23 actually shows a 10% decrease as compared to FY '22, and the main reason for this is the decreased spending in our capital projects. It's about $500,000 less funding in capital projects in FY '23 as compared to FY '22, and about $200,000 increase in O&M expenses, coming in under $5 million. And again, it's about roughly 10% less than it was the previous fiscal year. Article 7, that is the Sewer Enterprise Funding Article. And this, I believe, is the third year we've done this now, ever since the Sewer Enterprise Fund was created by the select board three years ago. This funding article is for $361,000 and it's a transfer from the general fund to the Sewer Enterprise Fund and it's to operate the existing sewer system and pay off any debt principal interest that may be associated with the sewer department. This has increased $115,000 as compared to last year, and 75% of that is due to the debt principal interest that we are now paying as we expand the sewer system into a larger project. You know, debt principal interest that is associated with design and associated with land acquisition. So those are those two articles. Thanks, Anthony. Back to you.
Thanks, Nick. With me right now to talk about Article 8 and Article 5, because there is a park and rec portion of Article 5, is our finance director, Alicia Dunlebenjamin, and our park recreation and community education director, Alicia Day. Welcome, ladies. So let's talk about, we start on 5 or 8?
We'll start with 8, thank you, Anthony.
Excellent.
So the outside auditor said that the park and recreation, which is currently an enterprise fund under Mass General Law, Chapter 4453F and a half, should actually be a revolving fund under Mass General Law, Chapter 4453E and a half. So it's more of an accounting change. So instead of them having to go through DOR to have their retained earnings certified, their balance would roll. The state said that they could keep their current enterprise fund and spend it down even though they're starting a brand-new revolving fund. The reason why is because they need to start building up receipts in order to spend the monies.
Which is Article 8.
Which is Article 8.
Right.
In addition, we have absorbed the finance, excuse me, the PRC director, assistant director, and their admin staff into the general fund along with their benefits because they are not doing programs to generate income for themselves. The staff that they hire seasonally would be doing that, and so they would be the ones that are paid out of the revolving fund along with their benefits.
Yeah, that's right. So let's see, the next slide there. There we go. So we have a breakdown of the revolving fund, what will be left in it for the next upcoming fiscal year. So we have around $263,000 to be able to help us get through the beginning of the fiscal year. As Alicia had said, we're, you know, gaining those receipts to be able to help us do that switch over to the revolving fund so that after we've finished all of the funds that are in the enterprise, we'll be able to dissolve it later on.
Correct.
Yeah.
So this is just a depiction of Article 8 with what the enterprise fund, we believe, is going to be the balance at the end of the year they can start spending next year.
Right. Yep.
Great. And then Article 5.
Article 5 is showing the revolving fund that they will be having, brand-new, that's going to be starting with a budget of 1.1 million that they estimated that they'll start to use. And hopefully concurrently while they're.
You're spending down your enterprise fund.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
So that 1.1 was a projection of what you anticipate bringing in from the receipts from various programs?
Right. So, I mean, all of the budgets have been a little crazy over COVID, so we've done really well this year. So the calculations that we have are, like you said, they're projected idea of what we would be able to spend and bring in throughout the next fiscal year. So we'll play with it and hopefully, you know, we keep that cap, but that's something that we'll just work with that as we go on in the future.
Alicia, thank you so much for explaining both Article 8 and Article 5, and Alicia, you as well. Thank you for coming and joining us. Alicia, you stay right here. And we're going to bring in Sean O'Brien, our Assistant Finance Director/Treasurer, who will go through a number of budget items with Alicia and myself. So now we're going to go on to talk about Article 9, which is the FY '23 Capital Items for Available Funds. There's two sections here, and our total capital projects comes to $1,157,295. And the first section, in Section A, Sean, is 557,295. And there's a number of projects. Do you mind going through those just for the folks at home to know what was, how we're spending that money?
Yeah, so as part of Motion A, which is the cash capital outlays, we have two items for the highway department, which are 22 F-350 and a 22 F-750. These are some of the replacement vehicles for the fleet there with fire. There's the replacement for utility truck for $50,000, as well as the paint for the ambulance to keep that up to code and compliance. The police department's also replacing two cruisers. Those total $143,000. PRCE, our rec department, is replacing the 12-passenger van for $37,000. And lastly, the high school's updating some of the security systems for $60,000.
And the second section of that article, Sean, and was called Letter B, is $600,000 for the cap stabilization. Do you mind explaining that one for the folks at home?
Sure. So as part of the capital financing, we have a capital stabilization fund, which has a fund balance of around 1.6 million. Of that, we're planning to use the $600,000 to make sure our dispatch communication system is replaced because it's running into some technical issues and it's the hub for all the public safety communications.
Great. Thank you, Sean, and of course, thank you, Alicia. And now we're going to go to Article 10, which is the CPC article, and we're going to have Joe Ladin, our Assistant Town Administrator, and Carolyn Mueller, the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Hi, thank you, Anthony. And again, I have Alicia Benjamin and Carolyn Mueller with the CPC, Community Preservation Committee, and we're going to talk about Article 10, the FY '23 Community Preservation Budget. Carolyn, if you could just give an overview as far as what is being reviewed by town meeting?
Sure. So the first slide that shows on the screen is just basically our savings and spending policy. Just a real quick overview for people who haven't followed community preservation. We have three things that we try to do is build up and sustain balances over the period of time, and that allows us to have some money for the projects that come through. We may earmark some special substantial funds for all CPA allowable spending categories for public projects. And we try to give some flexibility to CPC to award funds to legitimate and worthy projects. So that's kind of the policy, a real quick overview of what we try to do. This next slide is the approximate balances that are in our Community Preservation Committee Fund, and we thank Alicia for putting this slide together. We have a little over, a little short of a million and a half dollars right now. Open space, as you can see, is a little over $476,000. Historic Resources Reserve Bucket is 155,263. Community Housing Reserve is 25,703. Active Recreation Reserve is a little over 530,000. And Designated, which is our general reserve fund, is 287,828. And we have a leftover reserve for the administration budget of 6,789. So you can see how the balances in the chart there, we can see how those are allocated. On the next slide is what we are tasked to do every year is the 1% surcharge on the property taxes, what funds the Community Preservation Fund. And every year, we take that revenue that comes in and allocate it to the different recreation budget, the open space budget, historic resources, community housing, and then we always give a little slice to administrative. We always give the lion's share to open space, giving 40% of the budget this year because those projects are larger. So they need, we need to build up the balances. And then typically, the last few years, we've been following this percentage and kind of equally allocating to the other three buckets. So the next slide shows the actual article that we are presenting, Article 10. There's a couple of things that we have to do with our article. One of them is to allocate that revenue that we just spoke about. We also have to allocate funds to pay down the debt service. There's three projects right now that we're paying debt service for open space. There's the Yap Lucy's Land, $5,500. The Cobb Property, we owe $20,325. And the Williams Property up on Boxborough Road is $36,900. And of course, those will decrease over time as we pay down those bonds. Historic Resources Debt Service, we're paying $11,050 on the Houghton Building roof, and I think that covers the debt service. The other amounts that you see are the allocations that we just talked about. I think I'm going to move to the next slide. Yeah, so this is the, this is our budget. Alicia, why don't you, this is your slide, why don't you go over this one?
Sure. So the 1% surcharge is estimated at 45905, and the state matches estimated at 30%, or $128,084. And the reason why I chose 30% is we actually got 39.37%, which was much higher than we thought we were going to get. So I thought 30% would be more conservative as a number for the CPC to budget. You take that and add it together, you come up with 578,989 is the total fiscal 23 budget. And then, as Carolyn stated, you just take the percentages for each category and you apply them. So the 40% to open space at 231,595, 18% to historic, 104,218, 20% to community housing, 115,798, 20% to recreation reserve, 115,798, and general reserve, admin, 2% are $11,580.
And then Carolyn, also as part of this project, we have three projects that we're looking at seeking funding for.
Yeah, the next slide is just recapping the debt service. So the one after that, we have the three projects. One is the open space and recreation plan for $30,000, and that's updating the OSRP that we have done, 2006, I think it was. So it needs to be updated because we often use that to get grants. When we just purchased the property, the brown property, I know the state gave us over half of that project, and part of that was because of having the plan. The Historic Resources Reserve, we have the Westland Cemetery Gravestone Preservation, that's Phase 2 of a project, a joint one between the Cemetery Commission and Historical Commission for $9,950. And that's taking last year's preservation assessment and actually doing some work. I think we'll get like 17 to 20 graves preserved this year, which will be great. And then the, excuse me, the final project is Recreation Reserve, and it's a $20,000 feasibility study for relocating the tennis and pickleball courts, proposing to build the senior center at the space on Shattuck Street. So we'll have to find a place to move the court, so that's what that project will cover.
Right. Thank you, Carolyn. And just speaking briefly about that, that last request, it is something that is tied with Article 20, that has multiple parts for the senior center and acquisition of some of the parcel next door to allow for that senior center on the tennis courts. There are some improvements that need to be done at the tennis courts, and also Park and Rec has additional demand for pickleball courts. So this feasibility study will look at other town-owned properties in order to come up with a concept plan and then come back to town meeting for a future request for construction, should it be supported by the CPC.
And the town.
And the town. So thank you both very much for giving this overview of Article 10.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, next up is Article 11, which is the receipt reserve for appropriation from the PEG Access Fund. This is the article by which LCTV receives its funding. The town has various cable franchise agreements, I presume with Comcast and Verizon, maybe here in Littleton. And they pay a percentage of subscriber revenue to the town exclusively for the operation of PEG, Public Educational and Governmental Programming. And those funds accumulate in this receipt reserve for appropriation fund. They can only be used for cable programming and so forth. Littleton uses it to fund the salaries, the benefits, operating expenses of the studio. And as I said, town meeting has to vote the money out of the fund in order to use it. It's a little cumbersome, I think, but it certainly is transparent that the community is voting affirmatively to fund the local community television. And Anthony, I think we, this, we've done this under the consent agenda, and I think we probably will again because it's not controversial in any way.
Most likely correct. It's part of our standard budget article that we have. So I would anticipate that probably will go under the consent agenda, yes.
Yeah, I would think so. So that's, again, a fairly routine article that we made dispense with that earlier. And I think next up, we're going to handle Article 12, capital transfers. And Anthony, is the finance director going to handle this for us as well?
We're going to have Alicia back, and she's going to go through Article 12.
Very good.
Joining me again here is Alicia Dunlebenjamin and Sean O'Brien to talk about Article 12, which is some capital transfers. So Sean, maybe you can help explain to our residents, why do we have these capital transfers from time to time?
Sure. Anytime a town meeting when there's a capital article, that appropriation exists until the balance has been spent down. So a lot of these capital projects have already come to completion and are either, you know, over a couple of years old. So we're looking to clear these remaining fund balances through the town meeting action and then appropriate those to two projects. One for around $252,000 for space needs and improvements here at Town Hall, and the other is $50,000. And the other is $50,000 for NAGOG Orchard Building Feasibility Study.
Right. And the first part of that article is really for allow us to take advantage of some of the vacated library space and expand. So Park and Rec can continue to expand and we can continue to expand on our territorial land use. And obviously with the orchard, there's, there's a number of buildings, including the house, that we need to do a study on to see what we may in fact need to do for improvements going forward. So thank you both again for going through Article 12. With me right now to talk about Article 13 is Joseph Layden, our Assistant Town Administrator. Article 13 is the FY23 Compensation Grid. Actually, before we get into it, I just want to thank Joe for his time and service that he provided to the residents of Littleton as our Assistant Town Administrator. Joe will be leaving after town meeting to become the Town Manager for the town of Upton. So Joe, I just, for myself, the residents of Littleton, thank you so much. You've been amazing to work with, and I wish you nothing but the best of luck.
Thank you very much, Anthony. And I've loved working for the town. And while I'm looking forward to new experiences, I'm going to miss a lot of people that I've worked with and residents that I've interacted with.
We know how to find you, Joe, so you're not going very far.
Right.
So let's talk about Article 13, the Compensation Grid. I think that, why don't you just sum this one up for us?
Article 13 is pretty straightforward. What it does is establish the FY2023 Classification and Compensation Plan for non-union town employees. It includes a 1.5% cost of living increase, and that's it. It is consistent with the similar COLA increase that was provided to other unions for this year.
Correct, correct. Thank you, Joe. And we're, and again, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Well, welcome back, Sean. I'm going to keep you on the hot seat here. And we're going to talk about the next three articles. And we'll start with Article 14, which is the Capital Stabilization Funds.
Sure. They're all, they're all kind of related, capital stabilization, debt exclusion stabilization, the actions relative to each one of them. The Capital Stabilization Fund is established to cover our cash capital needs. And it can also be used for funding debt service and other capital projects. This year, we're doing something a little bit different, just to comply with policy, which is to use, you know, 1% of our capital plan towards the Capital Stabilization Fund. With the community senior center coming online, hopefully at some point next year, we're taking $816,000 from the capital stabilization, putting it in and taking it out to fund the senior center project. We're doing that to lower the potential financing and debt burden associated with that and hopefully save the town on some interest expense.
And that actually will be a part of Article 20, that will show that $816,000 being transferred in.
Perfect.
Yep.
So Article 15, Sean, the Debt Exclusion Stabilization Fund.
Sure. So this is an account that, because of our levels of free cash, we've determined that a half million dollars dedicated to this will help smooth off some of our current debt exclusions that we have. Currently, the fund balance is a little under $250,000. So putting another half million in should get us some more life out of those funds to, which are used to lower the burden created through debt exclusions. Last year, we did a refinancing on some old debt to lower the tax rate. And this, and for next year, we're proposing $300,000 to be used for the same purpose. So this will often take.
Which is Article 16, correct?
Exactly. So I'll just roll right into that, which, which will take usually, you know, a few cents off the tax rate, which, you know, will save the taxpayer, you know, on their bail proportion of their value.
Excellent. Sean, thank you so much, I appreciate it. So Alicia, we're going to talk about Article 17, which is the Creation of Oak Hill Stabilization Fund. Why do we have this article this year?
The reason we have this article this year is the Oak Hill Stabilization Fund we need is because we have an Oak Hill Cell Tower Special Revenue Fund. And for the Department of Revenue, unless there's a special statute or we have special legislation, we cannot have a cell tower special revenue fund. In fact, they would want it closed to the general fund. So we are going to close it to the general fund as DOR has instructed. And during this town meeting, we are going to create a stabilization fund. So that way, once it has closed out to the general fund and hence been certified as free cash by the Department of Revenue, we can then transfer funds in at fall special town meeting so that they can then use those funds as they need to. I know that you had instructed us to put $12,800 aside in the budget so that they could at least have some money in fiscal year '23. The Conservation Commission could have access to money that they need.
Right.
While waiting for the stabilization and the certification of free cash.
Right. So for the, for the outside folks in those committees, they're not going to notice, or at least we hope that, they wouldn't even notice, this is more of an administrative for us, that the money's still in the operating budget for them. And then any additional adjustments that we need to make, that we may come special town meeting in the fall. Well, thank you, Alicia, and thank you, DOR, for changing the rules. So back with me for Article 18 is our Assistant Town Administrator, Joe Layden. And Article 18 is the Fund Collective Buying Agreement. So Joe, take it away. And why don't you, do we have anything on this one?
At this time, we don't. However, this article is a placeholder article so that if we do settle a contract, we can bring a number before town meeting for this article.
Right. Certainly, that's our, our hope and intent is to be able to do that. And we'll see. We do have some meetings before town meeting, and hopefully we can get it done. If not, again, that's a placeholder article that we could have town meeting approve. But thank you, Joe, and on to the next article. So with me here now to discuss Article 19, which is the Senior Citizens and Veterans Tax Work Off Abatement Program, is Joseph Layden, Assistant Town Administrator, and Alicia Nunnely Benjamin, our Finance Director. Now, Joe, Alicia, this is normally an article that probably gets called on the consent agenda. But for the folks at home, why don't we, I don't know who wants to take it first to talk about this article so they understand what we're doing year to year.
I can take a first stab in if you want to add in. So this article basically sets aside funds to allow for seniors who are 60 years and older, who are residents of the town, to do service, to do some work in Town Hall, help some of our departments. And in exchange, they get compensated through a reduction in their property taxes.
And it also has a veteran tax work off that they have to be at least 50 years of age to get an abatement off of their taxes.
So pretty straightforward then. And the amounts have remained the same, I think, for the past couple of years. I think I did boost up a few years ago when I was maybe sitting in your seat, Joe. But thank you both. That was a quick article to explain. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
So back with me to talk about Article 20 is our Assistant Town Administrator, Joe Layden. That there's a lot going on. There's seven parts to this article. The first section is dealing with 31 Shattuck Street, and that's the eminent domain section. Number two is, again, dealing with 31 Shattuck Street. And it's the Select Board's authorization to sell the parcel. Number three is, again, about 31 Shattuck Street, that creates the funding to proceed with the purchase. Number four is the Senior Center Stabilization Fund and transferring additional funds for the project. Number five is the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Senior Center Stabilization Fund. And that's transferring one fund to the other fund. Number six is an amendment, an amends town meeting, the town meeting, annual town meeting on June 12, 2021, a borrowing article for design from, originally from $1 million to $1.5 million. And number seven allows the project to proceed through the construction without the need to return to town meeting. So I'll go through these one by one in a little bit more details. As you can see, from the next slide, on number one, that is, first, we're working currently right now with the owners of 31 Shattuck Street on a purchase and sale. So we consider this to be a friendly eminent domain. And this is exactly what Section 1 allows the town to give the Select Board the authorization to purchase this article. And here to talk about the purchase of 31 Shattuck Street is our Select Board Chair Chuck DeCoast with the owner, John Comarcino.
Thanks, Anthony. Again, I'm Chuck DeCoast, Chairman of the Select Board. And I'm here with John Comarcino from the owner of 31 Shattuck Street. And just wanted to bring John in and have a, just a brief conversation to answer any questions and any, put any misconceptions aside about the eminent domain of his, his home at 31 Shattuck Street. So John, thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. And just, a lot of folks have raised concerns when they hear the term eminent domain. They think it's a, it's a aggressive taking and the town is taking advantage of the individual that, who owns the property. So just wanted to get your input or your feelings about the, the process that you've been through.
I've bumped into a couple of people too that brought it up. And I think there's a misconception, I would have been one of them until this started, that it's a hostile process. And it's not the case. When, when the town of Littleton approached me and Anthony, we had a conversation. And it was very amicable. And between you and him, and we've had several meetings. And I can say that it was a very, very easy process. And, you know, given what you're planning on doing, I was on board with the plans. And I think it's a good idea to put the senior center there. Assuming that the tennis courts are put someplace else, new ones, I think that's, it's a great idea. So I'm on board with it. And I can tell you, Anthony was, was very fair with the deal that they offered me. And I have no complaints, none. And I think every time I had a question, somebody was there immediately to respond. And it was a very easy process. So, yeah, I wanted to spell all the, to anybody that might be wondering what's going on, that this just, those are all just rumors. And it couldn't have been any better.
Okay, great, great.
Yeah.
And I mean, just a little history, I mean, you grew up on Shattuck Street.
I grew up in the house across the street, right? So I used to play on those tennis courts. And I can tell you that, yeah, where nobody really wants to see them go, but it's for a good cause. And I think if the tennis courts are moved, there's no harm, no foul in that. You know, and the fact that we were just talking to some of my neighbors, how much better even behind the tennis courts at the library, how this whole area has been, is getting renovated, so to speak. Whereas before, you know, it was, it was sort of people showing up and throwing things over the hill. You know, so now the neighborhood's much better. And I think this, I don't think this building is going to be as intrusive as people might think. So, and it's for, you know, it's for a good thing, to give the seniors someplace to go. I don't think it's a bad idea. So I'm on board with it.
That's great, that's great. And as far as, I mean, just from a financial standpoint, you were going through a real estate transaction and.
Yeah. So you know, the town of Littleton has given me the same deal we would have had otherwise. So we're, we're not out anything. And I think that, you know, everybody agreed that that was the right thing to do. And there was no pushback on either side. So it was, it was really fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. I can't complain.
All right, good.
Yeah.
Good. And that's, I don't know if you have anything to add. I just, I wanted to at least let folks know that, you know, there is, there is actually a person, a resident from Littleton that, who cares deeply about the neighborhood, having grown up there.
Everybody that I'm neighbors with now, I was neighbors with when I lived there. Right? And, and they're very passionate about that street. And, you know, as, as, as am I, because that's why I moved back. You know, Littleton's a great place to live. So I, I'm not in disagreement about this with the town, with what you're doing on the tennis courts, with the senior center. I think it's a good idea.
Excellent.
So I'm on board.
Okay, great. I appreciate you coming in.
Absolutely.
Answering some questions. And, you know, nothing, nothing much more than that. We just wanted to let people know that this is something that is a mutual agreement. And it's something that I think is for the full benefit of the, of the community as a whole.
You got my thumbs up.
Thanks, John, I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
So on the next slide, why do we need Shattuck Street? Why do we need 31 Shattuck Street for the, for this project? So as you can see from the next slide, this is a lot planned for 31 Shattuck Street. It's a third of an acre. It's, it's not a traditional square or rectangle. It kind of jets out. And, and you can see on the next slide, what we want to do is really take that parcel A and then swap it with parcel B, which is land that the town currently owns. Then that lot will maintain its third of an acre. And it'll allow, as you can see from the next slide, the senior center to sit right on that parcel. And as you can see from the bottom right hand of the screen on this slide, you can see 31 Shattuck Street. So it, it should maintain the driveway and, and we'll just give it more land into the back. Joe, Article, Section 2, why don't you talk about that one and what that means for the project?
Sure, Anthony. So with the second part of Article 20, it basically is seeking town meeting's authorization to have the Select Board sell the property. This is not a property that the town is looking at acquiring. We, except for that, that portion of land that Anthony just showed you. And making sure that the lot was a little bit more regular. Once we're able to do that, revise the lot lines, our intent is then to sell the property, go through RFP process and dispose of that. And that's it.
So, you know, and I failed to mention in the first, first part of the article is the purchase price is, right now that we're negotiating is $675,000. On the second part of this article that Joe just explained, once we're done redefining that lot, we would now intend to put that lot back on the market for sale. And hopefully, we'd be able to recover completely our $675,000. Obviously, markets change, but that's really the hope, you know, that we'll recover all of the money that we spent, or almost all of the money. Now, number three allows us to use $700,000 from free cash for the funds to acquire 31 Shattuck Street. Now, you just heard me say it was $675,000. So the other $25,000 would be necessary for some site work, site plans, surveying.
Some closing costs.
Closing costs.
Putting it up for, for sale again.
The A and R that we would have to do. So that's that, $25,000, we'd cover that. Number four, Joe, you want to explain number four?
So what this basically does is that it takes some fund of money, $1,355,000, and transfers that to the Senior Center Stabilization Fund.
It's as simple as that. Thanks, Joe. And number five, as you can see from the next slide, on number five, what we're doing is we're actually transferring $816,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Senior Center Stabilization Fund. And number six, this is, and I mentioned this earlier, that originally in June 12, the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, Article 10 authorized us to borrow $1 million for the design of the senior center. What we're looking for is to amend that, to increase that to $1.5 million. And really, why we needed to do that is the price of construction because of COVID has increased dramatically. And we think that we're going to be, which you'll hear tonight at the Select Board meeting, we have some preliminary numbers that came in very favorable by moving the, the building from the slope site to Shattuck Street. So that will allow us to get right into design. And the last part of this article, it's, it's a lot there. But basically, what this is allowing us is to complete the project to completion. So we'd be taking money that was just put into this, that originally was put into the stabilization, Senior Center Stabilization Fund, and then making that available as well as being able to borrow up to $12 million for the project completion. Anything to add on that one, Joe?
No, it's, it's a lengthy article. There's a lot of important pieces. But it shows that, you know, there's a lot that we're pulling together to make this project a reality.
Yeah. And, and that was important for the Select Board, being good fiscal stewards of the town, that with the raising borrowing costs and the interest rate hikes, this would allow us to take advantage of borrowings as soon as we're ready. So as soon as design is over, without going to town meeting. That could mean a half a percentage point, a quarter of a percentage point, which is, makes up a lot of money that, for the taxpayers. So this allows us to take advantage really of the lowest rates possible so we can complete the project. And that's Article 20 in a nutshell. So joining Joe Layden and I for Article 21 is Steve Mark, the School Business. So joining Joe Layden and I for Article 21 is Steve Mark, the School Business Manager. So Steve, this is the Acceptance of Non-Resident Tuition Revolving Fund. Why do we have this article this year that we haven't seen in prior years?
Yeah, so this is new this year, because we have a PACE program at the high school, which is a postgraduate program for special needs students who are transitioning after high school. So we have a couple of, because we had capacity in the program this year, we have a couple of towns that are sending students into that program, and so they're paying the tuition for that program. And because it's not school choice, it has to be this non-resident revolving fund, which is a new revolving fund that requires town meeting approval.
So I'd imagine we would have this going forward?
We'll have the revolving fund going forward. We may have some years where we have no students from out of town, and we may have some years where some towns send their students in. So it will literally be a revolving program, with some years we'll collect tuition, and some years we won't.
Right, so some years, we may see this article, and some years, we won't.
Well, their article is just to establish their revolving fund. Once it's established, we'll have it forever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
No problem.
So we're going to talk now about Article 22, which is the Appropriation of Transportation Network Community Funds, and people probably don't realize that that's coming from, right here, Uber, Lyft. So Alicia, why do we have this article this year?
Yeah, the reason why we have this article this year is that we're actually going to appropriate some of that money. In the past, we've actually let it accumulate per the statute until they build up a balance big enough where they could use it for some road-related Chapter 90 type of work. The Highway Department is requesting the use of $2,993.73 for the purchase of paint from Franklin Paint to be used by town staff for painting of crosswalks and road markings. It was interesting to see that because of COVID-19 over the past year, 63% of our revenue has dipped down.
Yeah, and I would imagine we may see a little bit of a better number for the next year, but still probably not as high as the, what is it, the 19, FY19 or-
Correct.
... number. So, yeah, certainly, we don't benefit as much as someone in a larger community, so banking that makes sense. So now, when Steve Yonley has a use for it, that he did, and now we can have town meeting appropriate that money for you. So thank you very much, Alicia. So with me right now to talk about Article 23, which is listed as MSBA article, which stands for Mass School Building Authority, is Steve Mark, the School's Business Manager. Steve, welcome again, and what is this article all about?
Yeah, so this is, this is an article that's related to the funding for the feasibility study for the MSBA Shaker Lane project. So Shaker Lane School has been accepted into Phase 1 with MSBA to do the eligibility, what they call the eligibility period. So we have to gather certain information, curriculum information, budget information, maintenance budget information, things like that, that MSBA is looking for. They'll do enrollment studies during this time period. So this is Phase 1, where we gather that information, submit that to MSBA, secure funding for feasibility study, and once that's done and submitted to MSBA, they review it and accept it, and then decide if they're going to move Littleton into Phase 2 of the MSBA project.
So this first phase, how many months do you think?
Yeah, that's a nine-month process.
A nine-month process.
And that nine-month process for us starts July 1 of this year. We have nine months to gather all the information, submit it to MSBA.
So when do you think the next time we may see an article relative to Shaker Lane come before town meeting?
Yeah, so I would think that would probably be in the fall of 2023, to look for funding for the actual architectural design funds and things like that, and then move the project forward with MSBA after that.
And the design process?
That's probably a year or two, year and a half. So we're looking at at least three years, probably, before any work is actually done, either on Shaker Lane building itself, or depending on what that study identifies, whether it's a new building or retrofit.
So that would probably be the third time that we'd come back to town meeting, is for the construction? Would that be right, or?
Yeah, probably, yes.
And that's guesstimate how long that might be before that happens?
Three years, yeah.
Excellent.
Yep.
All right, well, Steve, thank you very much for explaining Article 23.
Thank you, anytime. My pleasure.
The Article 24 is a borrowing authorization for the Water Department of $2 million as related to water main infrastructure, and I'm actually going to turn this over to Corey Garfield to get into a little bit more details on the purposes of this Article 24.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. So as Nick said, it's a $2 million borrowing authorization for water main replacement, and that's water main that has been a problem for us over the years, that's located within the new sewer district. So we figure while we're, you know, in the road digging it up, it makes a lot of sense to replace any problem water mains at the same time. It's just smart planning, makes economic sense, you save costs on the project when you do it that way, and it also just saves the town residents the aggravation of having traffic disruptions twice instead of once. So the other thing is, we won't actually be bonding this $2 million, so the borrowing authorization is really so that we can award a contract at the same time that we award the sewer contracts in FY23, and it really just carries us across fiscal years, since we plan to pay the full $2 million in cash in FY24. So the authorization's really just to allow us to award a contract in FY23.
Great. Thanks, Corey, and thanks, Anthony. Back to you.
Welcome back, Joe. So can we explain to the folks at home what Article 25, the authorization to sell 12 Robinson Road is all about?
Okay, sure, Anthony. So Article 25 seeks town meeting approval to authorize the Select Board to sell 12 Robinson Road. This property was purchased in 2018 to protect it. The town did put a roof on, and then we started a request for proposal process, working with the Historical Commission to make sure that there was a historic deed restriction put in place, and we're going through that process right now, and hopefully, the Select Board will choose someone to then rehabilitate the structure, preserve many of the important historic features, and allow for a new life for 12 Robinson Road.
Great. Thank you, Joe.
Next up is Article 26, which is a citizen's petition for removal of the use of plastic bags. Now, a citizen's petition is something that gets on the warrant by virtue of citizen's signatures, and for the annual town meeting, it only requires 10 signatures to get something on the warrant, and I think that's the case here, where they met the 10, the minimum 10 signature bar to get on the warrant. And you'll probably notice the language is a little bit different, a little vaguer than some of the articles that the town staff has put together. It simply asks if the town will move to, vote to remove the use of plastic bags. So it's, the language is a little vague, there may be some issues with that. We're discussing that with town council currently. I think certainly, the understanding is that they're talking about single-use plastic bags that you might get at a grocery store, or a CVS or something, but it may not be in just the correct format. Town meeting's a little fussy about things like that. So we'll see what motion the petitioners intend to offer, and we'll see if, you know, it'll be up to me as moderator to make a call, whether it kind of fits within the four corners of what was originally intended. So we'll, that kind of remains to be seen, whether that'll be controversial or even heard by town meeting, so stay tuned for that. And now, I think we're going to go finally to Article 27, which is some line item budget transfers from the current fiscal year, fiscal '22, and is Alicia handling those as well?
Alicia is, so she'll wrap up with Article 27, and we'll talk about any transfers that may be needed.
Very good.
Alicia, do we even need this article?
The only time you would actually need this article is if there was a municipal light department or school department that needed to do some line item transfers, but the school, since it's a bottom-line budget, I can't see that ever happening. The Municipal Modernization Act actually allows for the selectmen and the FINCOM with majority vote to do year-end transfers, line item transfers in the last two months of the year, which I think is a much better thing to do, because that way, it's more accurate for me, the Finance Director, to see what's remaining in order to cover deficits.
Right, so prior to the Municipal Modernization Act, I could see this being used, but with that, like you said, there's, may never get an opportunity to really use this again, so thank you. That was an easy one for you.
Yes, it was. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. Tim, I just want to thank the staff again. I think they did a great job in discussing these articles for the folks at home, and I also want to say, congratulations to you on a fabulous career as town administrator in Carlisle, and you retire, and I wish you the best of luck.
Well, maybe the bad news is, and now I'm your full-time town moderator, so look out for that, but I echo, you know, your comments, Anthony. I think this format is the way to present the town meeting review, because, you know, we're involved, or I'm involved kind of peripherally, and, you know, your staff are the ones that are doing the work and bringing these things to town meetings, so they ought to be the ones to kind of, you know, give the explanation to the voters, and-
I agree.
-they've done a fantastic job so far, so we hope that people enjoy this format of the town meeting review, and remember that, once again, it's Monday, May the 2, at 7:00 PM at the Charles K Gymnasium at the Littleton Middle School, 55 Russell Street, and we thank you for tuning in this afternoon, and we'll see you at town meeting.